Good morning. Nice to see everybody here this morning. This morning, we're happy to have Pastor Caleb Moore with Mountain View Community Church. He's going to come and give the invocation, if we all could stand, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord God, we come before you this morning just thankful for yet another day with breath in our lungs to enjoy life and to be able to have life. And God, I thank you that you are not an abstract and distant God, but you are one who desires to be near to your people, and you've done that through the person and the work of Jesus. And so, Lord, I pray that as this board of directors meets this morning to make decisions, that Father, you would grant wisdom, wisdom not from their own minds and understandings, but would it be wisdom that comes from you? Lord, would you allow their hearts and their minds to be patient, humble, filled with a speech that is seasoned with grace and patience toward one another? And as there are decisions that get to be made, Lord, would you be at the center of those, as we know that it is ultimately under your authority that you establish leaders? And so, Lord, we thank you for these men and women who are dedicating their time to serve this county and this city. Lord, we thank you for the ability to live in a country that has freedoms. Lord, we thank you for the men and the women that have sacrificed blood, sweat, and tears to establish and to maintain that freedom. And God, would we just desire to make decisions, choices, and actions that are based on liberty, justice, and freedom in which this country is founded on, under the authority and the name of God? Lord, grant this meeting your grace. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Moore. We'll go ahead and call to order our October the 3 AM session for 2023, and ask Supervisor Gagina if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an agenda before us. Any additions or deletions to the agenda this morning?
Yes, sir. I would ask for a change, not really an addition or a deletion, that we take what was labeled as Item 7.0 Committee Reports A, discussing potential Vatti grant proposals, and move that to 10.01 because we'll be seeking legal device and potential negotiations.
Okay, so I think what you're asking is to move that into closed session?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye. With that, I move for approval if we needed the agenda.
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda, and I'll turn this over to our county administrator, John Egerton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. We have several items on consent this morning. Under Item A, the board will consider approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $35,570. The funds are for the library and result from additional state funding received. Under Item B, the board will consider acceptance of a donation and approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $7,037. The funds were received from the Bobby Lynn Memorial Field of Interest Fund through the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation. Under Item C, the board will consider acceptance of a donation and approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $3,500. The funds are for the Parks and Recreation Department from a donation received for the Vince Vowel Music Program. Under Item D, the board will consider acceptance of a donation and approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $10,000. The funds are for the Parks and Recreation Department from Virginia Cremation Services LLC to go toward the cost of four outdoor AED units at the sports complex. Under Item E, the board will consider acceptance of a grant and approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $2,500. The funds are for the Parks and Recreation Department from the PATH Foundation. And under Item F, the board will consider acceptance of a grant and approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $3,257. The funds are for the Parks and Recreation Department from the Culpeper Wellness Foundation.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And thanks for everyone out there that committed to Parks and Rec. And Scott Foun, thank you for your donation and the PATH Foundation and others that are committing to Parks and Rec.
Seth found it interesting. I know it makes sense behind the scene, but to see Virginia Cremation Services donating for AED devices.
Yes, we had a discussion about that. Okay, approval of the minutes. Any changes to the minutes for the September 5 AM or PM meetings? Or entertain a motion to approve?
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, today is a very special morning, day, something that all of us have been working on, and past board members as well. We're going to honor the George Washington Carver High School 75th anniversary today, opening. It's been open 75 years, and we have recently went in and worked with the alumni to restore the name of the George Washington Carver High School name out there. And it's something I know I personally enjoyed working on, and I know every member up here feels the same way. And there have been other members of the board that have been involved dating back eight years ago, when Jack Fraser was on the board, and Sue Hansen, and Steve Walker, and Bill Chase, who's passed, and Alexa Fritz, they were on the board. And it's something that I think we're all proud of, and we did the right thing. And we're here today to officially give a proclamation. And I'll go ahead and turn this over to John. I know he has the proclamation here, and we're going to present it. I see several members of the alumni here, and Hortense and Jackson is here, and Marlene Ware, and Charles Jameson, glad to have you this morning, and the others there too that I can't recall their names, but thank you for being here. And go ahead and turn it over to John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a proclamation and a congratulatory letter that we'd like to present at the Jubilee that they plan to hold for this celebration on board docs. And I asked the board's preference whether you'd like me to read the proclamation into the record or get the voting over first.
I think we should get the voting over first and then make the presentation while John reads the proclamation. Is that okay? Let's do that. All right. So entertain a motion. I think everybody's seen the proclamation.
I move to approve the proclamation.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll make the presentation, and I'll ask Supervisor Dur to join me. It's in his district, and ask Hortense and whoever would like to come up and receive the proclamation.
As you make your way forward, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation into the record. This is a proclamation honoring the 75th anniversary of the opening of the George Washington Carver High School. Whereas in the throes of Virginia's 1902 Constitution that enshrined a separate but equal doctrine, African-American parents, grandparents, and friends from the counties of Culpeper, Madison, Orange, and Rappahannock began advocating in the 1930s for quality high school education for their community's children. And whereas in the mid-1940s, the Commonwealth of Virginia expressed a need for an educated population, one of the recommendations was that counties unable to sustain the costs of operating separate secondary schools could join together to form a regional school. And whereas African-American parents and citizens from the aforementioned counties petitioned and were granted permission by the State Department of Education to form a secondary school, and Culpeper was chosen as the location. And whereas the four said counties formed a regional control board to manage the development, pay the operating costs, and provide ongoing supervision to a regional segregated high school. And on August 31, 1946, 11.15 acres were purchased from Culpeper native school supporter and African-American Noah Price for the purpose of constructing the regional high school to be named George Washington Carver, and construction began in September of 1947. And whereas George Washington Carver Regional High School opened its doors on Friday, October 1, 1948, to more than 450 minority students from 8th to 11th grades, the school was dedicated on Saturday, October 23, 1948, and held its final graduation services on Friday, June 7, 1968. And whereas 75 years since the opening of George Washington Carver Regional High School, the campus that is now called the Carver Center is providing advancement opportunities for all people throughout the region, and members of the Alumni Association are still committed to telling the Carver story, the first and only secondary school in the Commonwealth of Virginia built especially to educate African-American students from four counties. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors do hereby officially recognize and proudly honor the 75th anniversary of the opening of the George Washington Carver High School.
Good morning, and thank you. Where do I begin? I thank you for being here for such a time as this. I always believe that people are in place for a certain reason, and every time you have the mic, you ought to speak some truth and make a difference. So you gave me the mic, so I am. I want to thank each of you for your vote, and I want to thank you for correcting something that had been done in the past, perhaps for a different reason, but you chose to make it right. And so, you didn't have to do that. And I know that there were many before me who came and asked to have that done, and it didn't happen, but it happened under your watch. And I want to thank you for that because that makes a big difference in, to the alumni of Carver, it made a big difference to the African-American community that you did so. Carver is a symbol, and as you can see, I am so proud that it is on your walls because it is a monument. It is one of the few monuments in this county to African-American struggle and to African-American history. And so, we did not want that to be lost. So we are there to tell Carver's story over and over and over again. Every day we open, there's a person who walks in who says, "I didn't know what that building was out there on 15." And we're there to tell them what that building was and what it represented. Now, and at that time, some will say, "Well, why do we want to go back and do that?" History is very important because you have to know history such that it doesn't repeat itself sometimes in era, but it also explains what's going on right now. So what we're living in right now is a result of a number of things that happened years before any of us were here. And so, we have to know that history, understand what happened during that period. And things happened for different reasons. Carver was built to accomplish two things: to maintain segregation, which was not a pretty thing, nor something we're proud of, but it also provided an education for us. So it was meeting two needs, both of which it did for 20 years. But when you look back on it now, we're in a different cultural context, and we're in a different time, and we have to change with those times, and we have to correct things that meant one thing at one period of time into what it means right now. So I thank you for doing that. I appreciate you, and we'll be back again to ask you for something else pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Hortense, and everybody here with the alumni. We appreciate you. Okay, next, 4.2 on the agenda. Carl Stafford, Senior Extension Agent, will provide a drought conditions report to the board. The board is requested to consider a resolution requesting a disaster declaration from the Commonwealth of Virginia. Mr. Stafford?
I'll be sharing some slides that Mr. Howard has given that depict some well levels and trends over time. And I don't know where they fall in the agenda, but I'd like to start with some points I've got that give us basis for approving a resolution. So I believe you have a copy of the county committee report from the USDA Farm Service Agency shared with John earlier. It gives me full basis for requesting this resolution. You only need about a 30% loss, not about. You need 30% loss in a crop. And we have two crops that are at or over that level. That includes hay and pasture, and you might puzzle over whether or not pasture's a crop, but for the grazing livestock producers, it is. So, but there's more to that. There's more to the effect on Culpeper County, and we'll get at those slides. You can see the colors that relate to our drought condition over time, and I'm not sure. I can point with that. I'll try to do that. I don't know what time interval that represents. I'll assume it's a growing, but we were not in the worst possible condition according to that color chart there. But Mr. Howard has got some graphs that relate to the well levels. This one addresses precipitation. So some nine inches below normal is the main point there, and that's an important fact to remember. And on the right side, over to my, I think this must be the, so over here is where I'll focus. So if you notice along the bottom there, there are some events that took place across time, but in the event we're coming to an end on now, we're at or below historic lows on well levels. That's an important part that'll lead me to some more discussion. We might assume that well levels are static, but they're not. He's got another slide there that's another production well, and that's at Clevenger's Village. And again, my focus is across the bottom of that graph. So low are the well levels in the casing, and so along the bottom there, that's how many, the distance from the top of the casing down to where the water is. And out here, we've got a significant cluster of measurements in this growing season that showed how low the water levels are. That doesn't address rainfall fully. There are withdrawals. So this gets at the daily use by our municipalities. And so, withdrawals coupled with inflows get you a total on the mathematic calculation there. So the water levels that are low are not all about groundwater infiltration. There are withdrawals that are part of that too. So this too will become a dynamic part of your thinking over time, not necessarily today. So again, this well, and it is at Clevenger's Village as well. I think I moved forward, did I? I'm not sure. Maybe I'm addressing the same slide. Let's reemphasize. So all these measurements out here on the right are down there. They're at the bottom. It's a low level, and that's all I can say about that. Multiple, your sports complex uses a lot of water. One of the farmers nearby fusses about it. He'd say, "When they start pumping water, my well goes dry." Well, he's got a shallow well first. He's in Triassic Basin. So a deep well in the Triassic Basin would pump a lot of water, like your well does at the sports complex. So I think I'd like to emphasize again the bottom of the graph, so and the trend over time. So the well levels are what we're representing, your irrigation wells, and so we're trending down there. We're trending down here, and we're really trending down and hit a low in the well level. That's important. And over the 2023 irrigation season, we see that it started out at one point and has trended down over time. So the need by that good Bermuda grass crop out there that we play sports on is high when it's dry. Evaporation's higher, vapor transpiration. So it's not all rainfall. There's more to it than that, but rain matters, and it matters when you get it. I'll get to that. I believe that's the last of those slides. Yeah. So we can turn that off, I think, unless you want to study them a little closer. But there's more to just a couple of crops being short. The grain crops, Mr. Rosenberg, we've talked about them, and you've had maybe a little more rain than others, and it matters what kind of soils you have. If you've got shallow soils, you need rain more often to keep those shallow soils charged with moisture. The deep soils can tend to pull moisture from below, and so can overcome the effects of dry weather longer. So the soils matter. So grain crop's down about 20%. I was in a combine yesterday with a young man that manages for a foreign interest, and so I was kind of, I'm checking with him. He said, "Yeah, we're about that. We're about that." He was cutting soybeans. So soybeans are ready right now, and those that haven't planted them early, they're busy cutting those soybeans to get them out before the next rain event does come. We will get rain. Evergreen trees that are planted, whether it's for pulpwood and timber or for Christmas trees, they plant them really early, March if they can. And if they don't do that, the later planted seedlings don't survive as well, particularly in a dry year. So they expect that. It's not necessarily a disaster for those growers, but they experience a higher mortality rate of their seedlings, and I imagine the lab-lalik pine growers just let it go, and the Christmas tree folks fill in the gaps that occur there. Our pastures have responded to rain. We got a little rain, about two inches across a broad area, some more than others. But so it matters if your pasture was a golf course pasture where you could find a golf ball. If it was that short, it doesn't respond too good after rain. If it was a pasture that would hide a softball, then that grass would take off and grow as soon as it rains, and sure enough, that happened. But it's an ebb and a flow. So those pastures, and even the short ones, are now running out of water again. And let's give another observation on that. So anecdotally, observations of stream flows are that my stream is dry. It didn't come up when we got that two inches of rain. Not even did ponds and lakes. I think Mr. Hoy said that his lake came up two inches after a four-inch rain or something. Again, that's a mix and a match situation. So what was this, about a million gallons a day, give or take, they pull out? How much flows in? What's the total math? And so, it gets at the amount of water they've got to pull from there. I noticed as I came in on 29 this morning, I don't always come to town the same way, but there's a little pool on the south end of 29. It's part of the lake. Maybe they call it something. There's a rock in that little pond. The weir that catches water coming off three flags flows into it, and that rock used to only just stick out of the water, and it's almost dry around it now. So that's anecdotal. So what's the withdrawal? It's higher, it's a record high withdrawal. Would you agree? The town is using more water than they ever have. Not all come from the lakes. They've got wells, but they've got record withdrawals. Record shortages in rainfall result in record drops in the pool of that lake, and they've got gobs of water yet. Mr. Hoy says, "I think they can draw it down 10 feet," and then maybe they've only done a couple. I can't tell you how much, but they were two feet under. But again, not all about rainfall. Part of it's about withdrawals. This leads me to an observation at the end here. A lot of young folks are using a weather app. Maybe there's somebody on this board that uses a weather app to look at rainfall. It's not a direct measure. It's a radar assumption of rainfall in a weather station. And Charlottesville described that that radar from Sterling climbs pretty high. By the time it gets to Charlottesville, the angle continues. And the little mist that we got following rain 10 days ago, whenever, was not measured, but it was happening. It was helping our dry condition to get a little mist that was immeasurable. And so, I tell you about this radar because it's as good as we've got, but the folks that are checking that radar with gauges say it's pretty close. So several have shared with me that their radar app is showing about half as much rain this time this year compared to a normal year. The National Oceanic and Administrative Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, they've got a measure, a rainfall gauging situation there at the airport. There's several others, and in several counties, and their numbers show about average. Now, what's wrong with an average? It's only good for that point in time. The next day, and the next week, and the next several weeks, the average becomes less and less meaningful. If you don't get rain when you need it, you've got a drought, Mr. Rosenberg. Three inches the first day of the month doesn't help us for the rest of the days. The longer, more days we go forward, the less it's, so I wouldn't hang my hat on NOAA's averages in terms of saying whether or not it's dry. It's dry because we've not gotten rain when we needed it. The aquifer, it recharges certainly is, its recharge is affected by summer dry conditions, but it's also affected by winter dry conditions. And we've been in a kind of a dry period since January. And so, we went into spring in the growing season, maybe with, don't have the numbers, pause slides. We might go back to a point in time to find exactly what it was, but we've not been recharging when we had a good, easy time to recharge in the winter, and we haven't made much progress, if any at all during the growing season. So in closing, I would encourage you to, so the next generation of supervisors will probably have to deal with this issue, which is what do we do about a fixed supply and an increase in demand? And I'll leave that with you. I think these lakes have been a jewel because we're catching water and we're conserving it, but they're not the only source for supplying a big population. We've had to have wells. You've got wells. Are they, are they, are those wells, is there an unlimited supply? I think the answer's no. So there's 100 cows that are drinking off a house well. The lady's worried about it. I said, "Well, work out some arrangement to cut that demand by half. Maybe we can pump out of the river for half the time, and they can drink from the house well." There's a well that's watering turkeys that draws 10,000 gallons when those turkeys are big. That well is made for that. It's okay. It'll do it. But there's demand. And then the young man said he was hauling 4,000 gallons a day. He's got a little single-axle road tractor that'll handle that weight, but water is, it moves. You know, when we haul petroleum, we've got baffles in the tank to keep that water, that liquid from sloshing. We don't have that in these farm tanks, and we drive down the road with kind of a moving load if it wants to get away from us. It's dangerous to do that. They get it done because they have to. I'll quit with that. Recommend that you consider that resolution that would go on to others to consider. I don't know what will come of it, but if there's something we can't expect, we'll be eligible for it down the road. The Shenandoah Valley's much worse, and if their worst conditions causes somebody to take action we can't expect or can't plan for, then we'll be eligible, should that lead to Culpeper County's situation. Questions, discussion, points of interest?
First question I would have is, is there a reason we should do the declaration now versus waiting and seeing if it gets drier a month or two from now? Because looking at the forecast, it isn't looking that great.
I'd do it now. Mr. Underwood, I think there are other counties in worse shape that have taken action. I think if there's some response that's not part of the usual response, it could happen before we get a chance to take action. So I think I would go with it now rather than come back to visit it again and retrace steps.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, as a follow-up, I know it varies dramatically in the county, especially this one. So the eastern part of the county is better off. I'm not saying it's great, but it's better off than the western part. Northern also seems to be a little bit better. That said, my experience is somewhat limited to about 24 years. 2002 seemed still worse than it is right now. But how does it compare over a broader period where we are versus longer-term trends rather than just the last four years?
So anecdotally, I would say my observations of the surface waters inform me that this is as low as I've seen those surface waters. I saw the picture of the Rappahannock River. Fredericksburg, my wife said, "Oh, the Rappahannock's dry." I said, "No, it's not. When you look at the picture, it looks like it is." So of that angle, there was some water in that river somewhere, but it was showing you all the rocks that are normally underwater. And this lake out here has record withdrawals, so it's not all about rainfall, but like, ooh, hadn't seen it like that before. So I think we have a record use, and we're watering a lot of animals from groundwater as well. It's very, very convenient. I talk to people about siphoning water from a pond that's not flowing to get water for livestock. Okay, but it's an aggravation, and it's troublesome to be doing those. And this proposal of the farmer pumping water for half the time while that house well pumps water the other half, I don't know how that's going to fly. But the lady's worried about it. She needs peace in mind and needs to have water for her. have water for her household, so.
Great, thank you.
Stafford, I agree wholeheartedly with everything that you've presented to us. I've actually had numerous farmers that contacted me a couple months back, and when you're talking about hauling water, they'd already begun the hauling of water. That is a temporary fix for a long-term problem, it seems like. And I'm hoping when we talk about pulling water out of aquifers or ponds or lakes or whatever, the question was posed to me of, would the town or county allow to pull out of Lake Pelham or Mountain Run? And my response was, well, I doubt that's going to happen because that is the reservoir for the town of Culpeper. Going forward, I've reached out to a couple private lake owners who were more than willing to help have trucks come in, and I'm hoping in the interim, until we get a better solution and a better handle on what's going on, that we could, some of the bigger lakes that aren't part of the reservoir system, that these farmers would have access to pumping that water. But when you talk about creeks drying up, and on our property, it's been dry, the Hazel River's been lower than I've ever seen it. So yeah, we have a major issue here that I don't think we can turn a blind eye to. This is something we need going forward when we talk about development and such, that how do we plan on taking care of that shortage? So I appreciate you bringing this forward today, and I would support that resolution 100%. So.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Stafford? Or entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution and declaration to the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Any further discussion? I'm in favor of the motion. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have Missy White, our Culpeper County Treasurer, with us this morning, and she's going to come and present her annual report.
Good morning, everybody. I'm nowhere near as elegant as a public speaker as Ms. Hinton is, but I've known and respected her for many years, so I'm going to give it a try here this morning. I'm happy to be here this morning to go over the 2023 Annual Treasurer's Report, and a copy of the report has been given to you all, so I'll just briefly go over each section. It's a lot of numbers involved. Report number one is in reference to any real estate on the land book that has been found to be improperly placed or not ascertainable, and to my knowledge, Culpeper County has no properties that meet that criteria. Reports two and three go together in that they address the collection rates for both personal property and real estate. You'll see in report number two for real estate that the overall collection rate for the 20-year period of 2003 to 2022 is 99.88%. Real estate parcels that are more than two years delinquent get turned over on an annual basis to Sands Anderson, and their collection rates for assigned parcels in total since 1997 is 93.1%. And for this past fiscal year, we collected $130,311 from their collections. Under report three, summarily, you'll see the details for personal property taxes levied, and that collection rate for a five-year period of 2018 through 2022 is 97.51%. Again, personal property taxes that are more than two years delinquent get turned over on an annual basis as well. We use a different collection attorney for this purpose. We use TACS, and for fiscal year ending 6/30/23, the county received $110,617 from them. Report four addresses tax bills that historically, under $5, no bills were mailed to taxpayers. And for this reporting period, 168 bills totaling $352.12 were abated. In report number five, it references any uncollected balances of previously billed taxes that were underpaid by less than $5, where the treasurer has decided to just write off those balances because the cost of collecting them would be more than it would be worth. But for this fiscal year, there's nothing to report. And in report number six, sadly, we have a summary of any uncollected balances of previously billed taxes on vehicles that were owned by taxpayers who are now deceased, and also meeting other specific criteria as prescribed by the Code of Virginia. And in this report this year, we found 87 accounts that totaled $31,041.66. So that wraps up the specifics on each of the reports included in the annual report as required by the code. But I always like to take a few minutes at this time to go over a few things that are relative to our office that are not mandated to be in the report, that are of interest to you all and probably taxpayers as well. The 2023 tax bills are scheduled to be mailed this week with a December 5 due date. This is a little later than we had planned or hoped, but the personal property book was slightly delayed, so the bills were balanced and finalized last week. They're at the printer, and I was told yesterday that the estimated mailing date will be Wednesday or Thursday of this week. So everyone be prepared for those green and blue papers to be in the mail. For reference, the bills were mailed out mid-September last year, and also in September in 2021, and we found that most taxpayers appreciated them, even though they had been mailed by mistake last year that early. They appreciated the extra time to pay them, either to split them in payments or just to have them paid and over with before the holidays came. So with that, our goal will be to continue to get the bills out by mid-September in the future. Our walk-up window will be another option this year available for taxpayers to make payments. It will be opening on Monday, November 20, and will remain open during normal business hours until the due date. And if you've ever been in our office on December 6, it's a dead, it's like complete silence that day. So it's kind of, we'll have it open just until that day. We continue to see an increase in folks taking advantage of our monthly automatic ACH program in 2023, and citizens who participate love having just a small balance come on that bill, and in some cases, mine in particular, no balance at all. So as a plug, the program is always open for enrollment at any time during the year, so if anyone wants to take advantage of it, please reach out, and we'll be happy to get the form to you. And lastly, I'm excited to announce that we are planning to offer an e-billing option for citizens in 2024. We're just in the planning stages at this stage, but we are in hopes that it will come to fruition, and we'll add another way to streamline the process and make receiving and paying tax bills a little more convenient to folks. This will be an opt-in program only, so paper bills will continue to be generated and mailed to those who are not signed up. So stay tuned. I hope to have some more going out in the Culpeper Quarterly in the near future, so folks can sign up for that. But that does it for me, so if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Report number three, the personal property delinquent, seems to be at a record-high in aggregate dollars and maybe even in percent, coming up to 7%. Are there a few large accounts or what's driving?
There are a few larger accounts that are being reviewed by the Commissioner of Revenue, so we can't really pursue those on a collection basis while they're under review. We also have had a little, we've seen an increase in the taxes assessed, so that does drive the, switch the percentages just a tad bit. But there is about four or five accounts that have fairly large balances that are creating that change.
More commercial enterprises typically?
There are some businesses that are owned by the same folks.
Yes. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. White? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our VDOT residency engineer, Mark Nesbit, and he's going to come and give a quarterly report this morning.
Thank you, Chairman Deal and board members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, present this quarterly update. You should have my last monthly report with you, and I've handed out a copy of my notes here to you earlier this morning. It's been a productive year this year so far because the weather's been very favorable. I mean, we've just listened to the drought information, and it has some bad, it's not good for farmers. It is, I guess, good for VDOT because it helps us with our maintenance activities, the good sunny weather. Our maintenance crews have been involved in mowing and brush removal and gravel road maintenance, pavement and drainage repairs, and many other activities. Our rural rustic program is completed for the season. We worked on and completed six road segments, and we will let them sit over the winter months and hard-surface them in the spring. We feel this gives us the best finished product for the long term. We have three segments planned for construction in 2024, which will complete the county's revenue share rural rustic program, which we really appreciate the county making those funds available. The pavement resurfacing program is complete for the season as well. The department paved 9.83 miles of road with plant-mixed asphalt and 15.59 miles of surface treatment for a total of 25.42 miles. That is centerline road miles. We have already submitted our paving plan for 2025, excuse me, for 2024. The total lane mile submitted is 44.61 miles, and I will provide more specific information to you early next year as usual after the project is awarded. The roundabout at Route 3 and McDevitt Drive, which is one of our first SmartScale projects, is still on track for an October 24 construction advertisement. It is currently in the final design phase, and will go to right-of-way later this year. Culpeper County currently has two projects funded from the last round of SmartScale, Route 3 and Route 669, Carrico Mills intersection improvements. It's scheduled for tentative advertisement in September of '28. And then the roundabout at 229 and 621 is scheduled for construction advertisement in September of '29. That's a number of years out that they are funded in the hopper. The town of Culpeper has three projects funded this last round. One is a roundabout at Route 3, Route 15, and 522, which I think y'all are familiar with, and the sidewalk, and also sidewalk projects on Orange Road and Old Brandy Road. No construction dates have been set for these projects yet. We currently have two planning studies underway. One is in the town on Route 29 Business Madison Highway, which runs from the intersection with Route 3, 15, and 522 to Route 29. The second segment is in county and town, is on Route 1529 Business, James Madison Highway, Brandy Road, from Route 229 and 29. The purpose of these two studies is to identify potential future projects for SmartScale or other funding programs. Both county and town staff are engaged in these studies, and they should be complete early next year. More information on the next round of SmartScale is included in this month's report. We also currently have two traffic engineering reviews underway. One is the speed limit and safety review of Carrico Mills Road, Route 669, and the second is a safety review at the intersection of Route 621 and Route 623. These studies are pending and will be completed very soon. We have a state force bridge replacement project, which is currently underway on 802 Springs Road, and it should be completed in the next couple of days. The next project is scheduled for next year on Route 628 Hazel River Road. The last item I have is to let you know that Culpeper District recently had three employees recognized by VDOT Commissioner Stephen Brick for statewide commissioners awards. Jason Frisbee, our Warnton Residency's Maintenance Operations Manager and a Culpeper County resident, was presented the Commissioner's Outstanding Leader Award for his efforts in training and developing maintenance operators in the residency. And also, Culpeper District, Christopher Suter and George Burus received the heroism award for their efforts in assisting a victim of a vehicle fire and potentially saving her life. So those are my main comments. If you have any questions about any of these items or anything else, I'd be glad to entertain them.
I do have one question, if I may. So we do have the 669 speed safety review pending, and you said those would be done soon. Do you have an estimated month of when?
That should be very soon. I know they've been, I think we got that request back in either September or August, but they should be, I would say, in the next few weeks.
Okay, because I have also gotten some complaints and safety issues about Chestnut Fork Road. There's been some incidents there of people excessive speeds to the fact that they come around a curve, and people pulling out of driveways, being unsafe. And we also have that new development that will be going in at some point with the 31 houses right there at the same area closer to the Rixeville Road intersection. So I don't know if we can look at possibly doing a speed and safety review of that portion of that road as well?
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. Yes. I'll follow up with you with an email to get a request from you.
Okay, sounds good. And then as far as the regrading of the gravel roads, I noticed that Winston Road, as well as Old Stone Mill, are exceptionally washboarded to the fact that it causes trucks to weave on the road no matter how slow you're going. So I don't know if we can get a look at those to see if we can possibly get them taken care of sooner than later.
Sure, Winston Road, and what was the second road?
Old Stone Mill.
Okay, Old Stone Mill, sure.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Calls from a little road that was resurfaced. So first, thank you for doing it. Store Road, Route 1145 off of South Merrimack Road. You talk about a small road. I'd guess the road's 100, well, 150 feet long, maybe 200. That said, there's another road on it, Jan Court. So you've got a combination 1145, 1146. If it's possible to notify those that use the road before the surfacing so that they could be prepared to not have stuff, because if you get very low-volume roads, sometimes they'll have stuff very near the VDOT right-of-way. And if notification is possible, that would be beautiful, because I don't see like the, it's not listed in the paving schedule, probably either because it's small or because it's just a resealing. But if there's any way we could notify, that would be great.
Okay, so that was Jan Road?
Jan Court. Store Road was just done, which is Route 1145. Jan Court comes to Store Road, so they almost treat 1145 and 1146 as one. 1146 was, I think I heard from every neighbor on 1146.
Okay. Yeah, we'll certainly, we'll certainly make sure we do that.
I appreciate it, thanks.
I do have one more thing. I was just curious where we were with the Matties Tavern Road in Carrico Mills?
I believe it's done.
It's done?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yeah, that was completed last week.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Mark, thank you for committing to the dump road, our dump road that you all are going to repair and then, I guess, overlay in the springtime?
Well, actually, we're, we have our patching contractor scheduled to basically mill and patch the whole road here in the next few weeks, hopefully by the end of October.
Right. And then you're going to overlay it basically with new asphalt, from what I understand, in the springtime, right?
Well, we're going to, we're going to patch it, and if we have, it's not in our program, but if we have additional funds, we can overlay it in the spring. But right now, that full-depth patching will take care of a lot of the problems, but we'll, we'll still have it under consideration to pave in the spring.
Okay. How about any update on the roundabout at McDevitt and Route 3?
Yes, it's, it is still scheduled for construction advertisement next, oh, let's see, yeah, next, I had that in here somewhere. Yeah, next October, and it's currently in design phase, and it's getting ready to go to right-of-way phase. So we'll, it's still on track for next year. I know that seems long, but that's where it is.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, the board will consider awarding a contract to Services Master for janitorial services, and Alan Culpeper is going to come forward and present this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back in the end of June, we went out for an advertisement for a request for proposals for cleaning services for 15 county buildings within the county, and also a day porter for the county courthouse five days a week. We received a total of nine proposals for this project, and after reviewing, we would like to award this contract to Commercial Cleaning of Fredericksburg. It's an LLC company. They're also doing business at Service Masters, you may know. A few of the prices associated with the contract and our terms, this will be a three-year initial term contract. this will be a three-year initial term contract with the option of two one-year renewals. The day porter cost for weekly is $400, $4,860 a month, which comes out to about $58,320 a year. Monthly cost for 15 county buildings, $19,250 a month with a yearly cost of $231,000. Both combined, the estimated yearly cost for the cleaning of 15 county buildings, a day porter per year, $289,320. This also include, does not include any stripping or waxing that may be needed throughout the year, carpet cleaning and so forth, but paper towels and soap dispensers are provided within the contract. Therefore, we'd like to recommend award to Commercial Cleaning of Fredericksburg, doing businesses Service Master. LT Services. They've had, LT Services has been employed with the county since, I believe, 2015. Boy, it might, excuse me, 2009, and then we re-advertised in 2015, and they got it again. And I would like to mention that this was a request for a proposal. It was not a bid. Therefore, we're looking for the most qualified contractor to perform the service that was desired by the county. For LT Services, I, I don't have that number in front of me, but I want to say it was a month. It cost around $18,000 a month, I believe, for, and that was for 12 county buildings. We added two additional buildings on since then.
So, so the bottom line, the contract is slightly more costly than the prior provider, and a little bit over budget, but you feel like that you can absorb it in the environmental services budget?
It's a little bit more, and that's to be expected. Every year, it was an increase of a certain percentage according to the index. Now, the, the prices did come in from LT Services did present one, and the price that Service Master has is comparable. It's within range of each other.
So y'all feel like you can absorb it in the environmental budget though, right, John?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Howard had indicated to me that this was a little bit more than what we budgeted for FY '24, but his budget will, will handle it.
Bill for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Alan. Okay, old business, the board, we're hearing, will hear an update from Tom Innes, All Points Broadband, and I'm going to ask John to start this off.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say before Mr. Innes gives the presentation that we had expected Mr. Carr, but he has fallen ill, and Tom is kindly filling in. But I believe that Mr. Carr has offered to come back again next month if that's desired by the board.
He would like to come back, if he can.
Well, we would like for him to be here, so we will definitely put him on the agenda.
Great. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for an opportunity to provide an update, cover a number of topics here. We go through our overall network design, where we stand to date, what's coming up in the pipeline, what have we been doing out in the field, and current issues and risks to the, the current schedule. At the end, we're going to go through a couple of next steps for Virginia's Infrastructure Act funding. This is called a BEED program. The state just put out a proposal for how they want to spend their $1.5 billion. So I got a couple of slides at the end there, very early days on that. But the meat of the update is going to be what we've done today, what's going on with the schedule. A quick reminder, our VADI project grant was awarded in August of last year. You see a map on the right-hand side. That's the, the project area. All those blue dots are the unserved locations that we submitted for an application and have approval to build fiber to the home to. The partners here are Culpeper County, Virginia DHCD. This is the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. We won an $8.6 million grant. All Points Broadband is putting up about $12.5 million. Dominion Energy Virginia, through their investment in what is called the utility middle mile, they're contributing about two and a half, or 2.9 million. We're also relying a lot on Rapid Handic Electric Co-op as an attacher to their poles. At the end of the day, there's going to be 480 miles of what's called last mile fiber infrastructure that goes down into all the neighborhoods. Dominion is contributing about 55 miles of, excuse me, utility middle mile. And this project is to serve 4,269 unserved locations in this grant application. That is what the, the award was from August of 2022. So right now, we've split up the, the entire county into seven different fiber service areas. They're color coded here on a map on the right. Couple of things going on in this map. The fiber service area is, we can provide service to it on its own without building other sections in the, in the county, and they're all also connected to provide some redundancy. Going on the legend from the top down, the blue lines are going to be aerials. So that's a fiber optic cable that we're going to attach to either a Dominion or an REC pole. And this is called the, the last mile. You can barely see it, but the red dashed lines, those are going to be underground. That's either where there is no pole and the electric service is underground, or we think that even if there is a pole, we're going to go underground. Typically try to avoid underground. It's about twice as expensive as a going aerial. Then we have our tier two cabinets. These are the green stars. These are passive cabinets. There's no power to them. They basically serve a neighborhood or two of, of homes. And they get their signal from a tier three cabinet, which is the orange octagons. Those are powered, they're, they're probably the size of this podium, maybe a little bit bigger. They're on the side of the road or attached to a pole. These have power, and they connect to either middle mile or our own redundant ring. The way that the network is designed, right now, we're going to offer service at what's called gigabits, so that's one gigabit of service download and upload to each location. But the way we design this overall network is that each location will be easily scalable to 10 gigabits in each direction. Nobody today uses that, but in 15 years or 20 years, that's going to be pretty common, and we have to build a network with that architecture in mind today. So in the future, we go to these cabinets, the tier three cabinets, and we switch out some electronics, switch out electronics like the router at your home, and we can upgrade the whole network to those capacities. So by doing that network design today, we're saving a lot of time and effort in the future. So across the county, there's going to be 60 active and passive cabinets just for the unserved VADI locations. We presented this network design to the county and to DHCD earlier in the summer. We, we amplified and ramped up our design resources to get this done about 60 days in advance because we knew that we needed to get that design out the door, get it through the, that step a little bit earlier than we had planned. So that was submitted and approved, I think, back in July or August, based on this design, and we're happy to share this on a screen in more detail with, with anyone who's interested. So as we usually do, we go through the key dependencies for our last mile deployment. One is to have the, the middle mile capacity in place. Right now, Dominion is about 85% either released to construction or constructed of their 55 miles. We have an issue with using REC middle mile. We're modifying our network design to account for a change in price from REC from when we submitted our application to, very recently, the, the price is just not worth the, the, the middle mile. So we're going to reduce our reliance on REC, build more of our own middle mile. It's probably going to add several months to the, the design and construction. But at the end of the day, you know, this is going to be the most cost-effective alternative for that. Number two is the utility pole make-ready. So we are not a pole owner. We have to go out and field and identify every single pole that we're going to attach to, which is about 9,000, give or take, in the county, owned by REC or Dominion. And we do a lot of engineering work. We say where we want to attach, then the pole owner goes through their engineering work, makes the pole ready, gives us a notice to proceed, and then we can attach. We're underway in that process right now. Got a lot more detail on that in the next few slides. Number three, very importantly, in a, an environment where the construction crews who are building this fiber can make all kinds of demands. They want a lot of constructible miles in a row that have been designed and permitted so that they can bring four, five, six crews here and knock the work out. Each crew can do about 20 miles a month of construction if it's all been permitted and ready to go. So our focus is to get a lot of these miles designed through the permitting process, get the construction package ready, hand them to a contractor, and they can bring in the crews and do that work. What we found in our experience in a project that's a year ahead in the cycle is that the fiber construction, once you have all the permits done, is going a lot faster than expected. It's a nice upside. The downside is getting through all those permits is very intensive. And I have more slides on that right now. As a quick reminder, so our OSP materials, that's outside plant, that's fiber, electronics, anything that goes to an internet service provider's network, all of those materials are on schedule either in the inventory or on the books of our distributor. And a quick reminder here is that even if we spend money on materials, we don't report that as a reimbursable event until it is installed in Culpeper County. It's different than most VADI projects where if you go out and you spend a dollar on electronics, even if it's sitting on your shelf, you get your 65 or 70 cents back from the state. The way we do that is we keep all of that on our balance sheet until it's actually deployed in the county. It's a good way to hold, you know, everyone accountable, incentivizes us to get the, the network built, and we don't take credit for just buying stuff from a distributor. I already hit most of these points here. I just, I want to remind folks that we are going through an unprecedented volume of pole attachments, not only for All Points but across the state. I got some more detail on this, but most of these poles in unserved areas don't have a telecommunications attacher, and we're seeing about 100 or 150 times the number of pole attachment requests that would typically be seen in these regions. It's a engineering-intensive process. We've got a lot of resources on it, but the volume is significant, not just for All Points, not just for REC or Dominion, but everyone who's involved in broadband in Virginia. Virginia spent a lot more money before other states, and so we're seeing these problems and issues a little bit earlier. We're working through them. We've got a long ways to go, but we've made a lot of progress. So here is an updated timeline of where we stand today. So started in Q3 of last year, focused on our low-level design. Earlier this year, we started our make-ready fielding and engineering. In the third quarter, we achieved our pre-construction milestone that was approved by the county and the state. We started submitting our pole attachment applications, and we have Dominion middle mile construction underway. So 43 of the 51 miles are either released or constructed. We expect in the fourth quarter to have make-ready construction, so in preparing poles for attachment to be underway. We're going to complete our modification of the All Points middle mile, and we're targeted for year-end for Dominion to be done with their middle mile. We expect in the second quarter of next year to start our last mile fiber construction. Again, here, the focus is getting all of the poles made ready so we can release those construction packages to the crews. We expect to be starting installations in our fiber service areas in the third quarter of next year and be substantially complete in the fourth quarter. We have 12 months after that to extend all of the VADI-enabled benefits. So this is for folks who have a long driveway or who would have been charged $12,000 from Comcast. They pay one low rate for our install, and that benefit lasts for 12 months after the time they could serve, they could be served. So what do we do in pole make-ready? This is the process to prepare utility poles for All Points to attach. There's typically four things that can happen if you do have to do something to a pole. We can move existing communications lines. We can relocate electronic equipment. If there's too much sag in a pole, in the span between poles, we can put up a new electric pole. Or the most cost-intensive is to replace the entire pole, move all the electric equipment over before we attach. First step here is, which is well underway, we've done over 7,000 of these so far in Culpeper. We have a vehicle, most of this work is done by the Timmins Group. They go out on the right-hand side, there's a very expensive camera on a tripod. We take pictures from multiple angles of every single pole that we are attaching to, and in a lot of cases, adjacent ones that we're not attaching to. And we identify the height and type of every single attachment on the pole, and we go through some engineering work to determine where we're going to attach. Here's an example of an electric utility pole with all the different attachers on there. So there's two things that we check for pole make-ready. One is from the National Electric Safety Code, and this determines the clearance between electric elements and a telecommunications attacher. So on a pole, we have to be 40 inches below what's called the neutral, which is typically the, the single wire, it's the lowest electric element in most cases. We have to be 40 inches below that on a pole. And then in the midspan of the, between the poles, we have to be 30 inches below. And we don't do that on a nice day in October. We do the math on a 10-year ice storm. So these wires are sagging, they sag at different rates based on their diameter and the amount of ice loading. And even in that 10-year ice storm, the, the distance between the neutral and the communications line has to be 30 inches. And between the ground, let's say for a state road and the telecommunications cable, it has to be 18 feet above that in an ice storm. So we run that series of math on all the poles, and we determine which poles fail or don't. And then the electric pole owner comes up with a proposal for how to make the poles ready for us to attach. It's one set of math. The second set of math that we do on a lot of poles is called pole loading analysis, and this takes into account lateral forces on a pole. So if you have a run of poles that is going north to south on a road, and it makes a sharp turn to the right. Well, if we're going to attach a high tensile steel cable on all those poles, it's going to want to pull the pole down where we're making that turn. So we do a bunch of math to make sure that the existing pole can stand up with our attachment. We also do a lot of math here to determine whether or not the pole is failing before we attach, which is happening quite frequently in the, the pole loading analysis, which means that as the pole stands today, it is failing the, the standard that's been imposed, which is not in All Points' cost, it's a cost of the pole owner. Here is the, the FCC's timeline for large jobs, which this certainly qualifies for. So there's supposed to be 165 days between when we submit an attachment and the pole owner gives us a notice to proceed. Breaking it down here, a couple of different steps. Who's the owner of the task, what we do in the task. You know, we're working up to a cadence of 1,250 poles per month with REC, and we're working very intensely with REC and Dominion to make sure we can hit our throughput. Now, 1,250 poles a month is relative to, right now, REC in 2022 is doing about 85 poles a month total. A couple of years before that, they were doing five or six a month. So we're doing an order of magnitude more poles, not only for REC but for Dominion and in all of the electric service territories going to unserved areas, they're all seeing this 150, 170x increase on the poles being attached. So right now, and these are stats that we're going to provide the county every month. This is from our database of poles that we share with Dominion and REC. We fielded 72, 185 out of about 9,500. We started submitting, submitting applications in September. As I mentioned, Timmins Group has been out doing a lot of the fielding for us. We've expanded our work with them in our contract to do all of this engineering. Bringing a lot of engineers, they take up probably two-thirds of our office. We need those engineering resources to help get through this massive amount of make-ready. And this is the biggest determinant on our last mile construction timeline. On the, the top right here, you can see, and we'll keep track of this, the number of days that a pole has been submitted and outstanding with a pole owner. days that a pole has been submitted and outstanding with a pole owner. In the bottom right, the gray columns are the number of poles we fielded and that we think we're going to attach to in each of the seven Culpeper FSAs. Some FSAs are much, much smaller, we're not going to attach nearly as much poles. The largest is Culpeper 7, and that's in the, kind of the eastern side of the county. The yellow on here is going, represents the number of poles that we've submitted for attachment, and we expect 165 days after that for those colors to be green, we get a notice to proceed, do a construction package, hand it off to a contractor. These are numbers that typically would never be reported by an ISP or by a pole owner, but we want to be more transparent, we're showing this data, we're going to keep showing this every single month, same slides, hopefully with more yellow and eventually green in As a reminder of our go-to-market and release to sales, from day zero, working back, we start with a series of mailers, door hangers, construction yard signs. We tell folks about 90 days in advance when they can actually sign up for service. We've had a lot of preregistrations on our website, apbfiber.com, and even after that date, we're going to still continue to send mailers and door hangers. We actually, I think we started, so this is the mailer we sent in September, they should have arrived last week or the week before. This is the backside of the, the mailer. Front side says, in Culpeper County and All Points Broadband, bringing you fiber to the home. We try to lay out generally the process here of make-ready, construction and installation, encourage people to go to the, the website. You know, we didn't want to wait any longer to get a mailer, a paper mailer, to all of the locations in the project, so we went ahead and sent this, trying to encourage people to sign up for registrations and get notifications in advance. This is what the, the website will show. If you are a, a location, you put in your address here, you'll get a notice on the left that says you're in a planned service area. Give us your, your contact info, sign up for notifications. You're not required to, there's no obligation, there's no payment, there's no commitment. And then about 90 days in advance of when your fiber service area will be lit, we'll offer an opportunity to set up an installation. So remaining eligible locations outside of the FY22 VADI project, a couple of things have happened since that grant application went in. From the, the FCC perspective, they, one, they changed the definition of broadband, so what would be eligible now may not have been eligible back then. And number two, they changed the way that the service mapping is required from an incumbent provider from a census block. So if you had, if you're Comcast and you serve one location in a census block, then according to the FCC, the entire census block is served. Everyone knows it was wrong, but that was the most accurate data we had at the time. Now they provide that on a location-by-location basis. So anyone can go to the FCC map, type in their address, and it should show them exactly who can provide service at what level and what technology at their address. So with those two changes, there is a, a new map of eligibility that the state is working on, and they're going to publish these locations. We think there's an about 150,000 or 160,000 across Virginia. They're going to have a program called BEED to address those. The, the next step, I would strongly encourage county staff to attend a webinar on October 12th. This is how to challenge to make sure there are no more left-out locations, you know? This could be in, in the town of Culpeper, in areas that you think are served, they may still be eligible for this program. So strongly encourage folks to attend this webinar, get some information for your constituents on how to make sure they're included. The, a quick reminder, so the final program guidelines for Virginia on how to spend their Infrastructure Act money, they've submitted it to the federal agency, it's the first state to do this, it's still pending, but you can read all of their proposals on their website. Couple of changes from the VADI program, they're going to go through a challenge process before the grant applications. If you all remember, on our VADI application, we submit an application and wait for an incumbent to challenge. This process is, is flipped, so they're going to determine all of the eligible locations before anyone can apply. It's a very short timeline, 30 days for your residents or you to put up a challenge is really tight, and we're, we're trying to prepare the county with all of that data. You know, regardless of whether or not we apply for the location, our mission is to get people broadband, and if a location isn't on this map, they're not going to get funding. So whether it's All Points or someone else, you got to make sure everyone is on this The next step on here for the BEED program is that in 60 days, or for a period of 60 days, broadband providers will send a notice of intent to apply for BEED. And then 90 days, sorry, we have 60 days to do a letter of intent, and then after that deadline, you have 90 days to actually submit your application. Right now, it's proposed that instead of letting incumbent cable providers write a cherry-picked applications for the areas that they just want to serve, you have to commit to serving an entire ZIP code tabulation area. Honestly, I didn't know that, what a ZIP code tabulation area was until this proposal came out, but we advocated for universal projects that are in a predetermined geographic area, as opposed to letting incumbents write a cherry-picked application, you got to commit to serving at least 95% of people in a geographic area. You have to apply for 95% of those locations, and then after the, the grant window closes, DHCD is going to work, work with providers directly to close that last 5% gap, whether that's with fiber to the home or an alternative technology like fixed wireless. In their proposed Volume 2, to the NTIA, the, the bottom bullet points here, these are the, the scoring breakdowns for the BEED program. So some similarities with DHCD's VADI program, but not, not 100% the same. 45% on this is the cost of BEED dollars per location in an area. At 20%, the next highest category is what is the price you're going to charge for your gigabit service, and it's based on the FCC's urban rate survey. 10.2% on fair labor practices of the provider, this is according to the Notice of Funding Opportunity. I think unless you leave this section blank, you probably are going to get all 10, 10 points. Big change here for the state compared to DHCD's VADI program is that all projects are three years. They're not incentivizing anything less than that, so, you know, in, in Culpeper, there's probably going to be 12 ZIP code tabulation areas with unserved locations. Regardless of the size, all projects are three years. And then the last two rounding out at about 10% is universality, so you got to hit 95% of these new locations they're coming up with, and you get a couple more points if you get up to 100%. And the last category is 10% a locality letter of support. In their initial proposal, the locality support was about 20% of this, and, and we, you know, thank DHCD because locality should have a say in, in who is awarded here, but they ended up cutting it in half, and I think most of those points went into the universality. So it's a lot on this, but I want you all to have this in your back pocket in case people ask what is BEED. This is a high level of, of the proposals that are going on from the state. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I have, I have a comment right out the gate, Tom, and you know where I stand on It's evident that we made a mistake when we procured this contract, basically not to put any timeline penalties in there for costs associated with the contract, because in my opinion, and this is my opinion, I don't know how the rest of the board members feel, but the timeline here is unacceptable. And if you were in the private sector, if you were in the private sector, working on this initiative that we have here now, what do you think the results would be with the principal that's facilitating the contract? How do you think the private sector would, would, would be feeling right now with the timelines that you've had over the last two or three years with us? The latest one was this project was going to be completed in February of 2024, and we're far from that. And I can sit here and look at, listen to the data and all the technical excuses that you want to give us, but the bottom line is the timelines, because I'm getting calls from our citizens out there that, you know, where are we with All Points? They know who All Points are. They, they want the service, and then when we tell them, well, you know, it's going to be done in February, it was going to be done, you know, we thought, you know, by now, now it's going to be done a year from now. To me, that's unacceptable. And, you know, the new trendy slogan now is, well, he's on it, or she's on it. Well, someone with All Points, in my opinion, is not on it, and the preliminary engineering should have been completed faster. The, the coordination with utilities should have been done better and faster, and I don't understand that. It's not up to us or me to understand that. We understand, we want to understand the bottom line, and the bottom line is getting service to our constituents, and it's not happening, and I'm, I'm disappointed, I really am. I've been on this board for eight years, and this project, to me, is the most disappointing project that we've tried to facilitate. So I'm hoping by next month that Jimmy Carr can come and he can explain that part of it to me.
Understood. You know, we started this program, this project, in August of last year, and I think, you know, one thing that has added to the actual and perceived delay is that we were announced for this project about a year ahead of that. And I think especially for constituents, that has been a very frustrating message, right? They hear the news that you get awarded this, this grant project, project. And then it takes a year for the actual contract to start. And in terms of the, the network design, you know, we did the design on time. Now, we do our pole attachments based on a certain standard provided by electric utilities. We got a change in that standard midway through. It's a, it was an honest mistake. We're working through that with REC to get back on our throughput that we can handle for these poles. In terms of where All Points is compared to other people, other ISPs who don't own their own poles doing make-ready, we've done 43,000 in the last year. And that may not sound like a lot, but for the six years for Dominion leading up to 2022, when we started these projects, they were doing about 7,800 pole application attachments across their whole network. So I, I hear the frustration, and I know that we put a lot of resources in this to be the leading ISP doing pole attachment make-ready. And, you know, when we were told that REC isn't going to meet its price that it committed to before the application, and there's a significant change, you know, we're not coming back to the county or the state to ask for anything more, we're eating that cost, we're doing that engineering, and we're, we're moving forward as best we can. And, you know, I hear you, Jimmy's going to be here next week or next month, and he can answer, and he'll answer in the same way. And I, I hear the frustration, that is why we're here today, we're committed to you all. You know, it's not, serving these locations is not all that easy, even for an incumbent provider, right? The Comcast application for Culpeper last year was the lowest-scoring application in the entire project, in, in the entire program. So that's even for an incumbent, you know, trying to do this. So we are here, we are a committed partner, we've put a lot of money and effort into this, and we're, we're your dedicated partner.
Mr. DeWitt? I agree with you wholeheartedly. And Mr. Ennis, to say that I'm frustrated or disappointed is an understatement. And I'm going to just rehash a couple of statements that have been made. When we talk about this contract being signed, from 18 months of that signing of that contract, we're going to have fiber to home, okay? To say that I get calls from constituents wanting to know what's going on, that is an understatement. It's a, and I don't know what to tell them, okay? I'm relying on you, your company, to provide me with factual information. At the end of the day, my constituents don't care about all of this technical jargon that you're putting out on sagging of poles and this and that, they want fiber to home. And I agree with Mr. Deal, Supervisor Deal, that I don't know that we didn't make a, a mistake. And I have thought about this long and hard, how I'm going to come across with this presentation today, and I'm really disappointed that Mr. Carr couldn't be here, because I don't like letting you have, you know, all the wrath of this. But at the end of the day, this board, we are, we are representatives of your customer, okay? As, as Mr. Deal said, in the private sector, you would have been gone a long time ago. And I'm, I'm sorry to say that, and we don't really care about how things work with REC and Dominion. You were, we were told that, you know, in, in King Williams, Southeastern Virginia, you've done this before, and this is, you know, you've, you've got this under control. Here we are now, and you're still kicking the can down the road, and you're still, now you're talking about other types of funding to, to get more money in, that we're going to serve more people? I'm not concerned about more people right now, I'd like to get the ones served that we were told we were going to get served. And I can tell you, I am very frustrated, and I, I just, this is totally unacceptable. Thank you.
I'd like to add that I'm, I'm also very disappointed in the results that we've had. Several months ago, Mr. Carr was here and promised us that in, in February of '24, we would be set and ready to go. So today, what I hear is all kinds of engineering problems, challenging math, wires that sag. I don't really care. I want to know how you're going to fix this and get back on schedule. I don't want to hear the excuses, we don't need to hear a rehash of the reasons why, we need to hear how you're going to fix it. And I didn't hear that today. And I hope that Mr. Carr, when he comes next month, can provide that information.
So as one of those people that are patiently or now impatiently waiting for that broadband service, because I have none, what is the actual schedule now that, what can we tell our constituents that we're going to be hooking up customers? I mean, I'm that Culpeper 7, that, that is my district, that is my house, and every time I look to see where I'm located in there. And we don't have anything, we barely have satellite that can allow us to do our online banking, let alone even attempt to do any type of streaming of classroom material or anything. So we have been depending on that February 2024 date, and now you're saying that it's being completely blown out of the water and we have to wait another eight months. When can we expect customers to start getting connected?
So those quarterly dates, that's our, our best estimate now. So early in the, in the fourth quarter of next year.
Yeah, the, what happened to the contract date with DHCD saying that February 2024 was?
That was based on a series of engineering standards that were achievable when we had them, and on a middle mile that we weren't going to be designing and building.
So are we at risk of losing that funding if we don't make those contract dates?
No, no. That, that is all on All Points.
I could look backward, but for better or worse, we're in this with you, we got to figure out how to get through what we're through. So first, is there any way you could pull up the map of the seven districts again? Where is Culpeper, okay, so Culpeper 7 is the far right, is Stevensburg essentially?
Yes, that's the, the large green one has two with two active cabinets.
Okay, and, okay, so I'm, I just want to understand, and so one, if you could share this presentation with us, that would be great, and ideally in the future, if we could get them before the board meetings, we have, Thursday is when typically we like to have information for the agenda so that we have an opportunity to review it. For me, the biggest issue now... Uh, for me, the biggest issue, now, when we were sitting here in May, which was our last update, uh, I specifically said that late February was incredulous, and I didn't believe it, and I think a lot here shared that. You mentioned things like the hundred and sixty-five day period that existed in May and still exists now. And there were several other components where logically, in retrospect, it was impossible, but it seemed impossible to me in May. And so we, we shouldn't rehash that, but ideally, we should know details to be able to set constituent and customer expectations. So my biggest challenge is that until this morning, at about ten-thirty a.m., the last update I had was everything would be done by February of 2024. There may have been updates given to somewhere else, some, but I'm not saying that nobody had a different date. I'm saying I specifically did not have and did not receive any communication other than hints that that wouldn't be the case. Uh, one of the hints, though, like the challenge with REC, I don't know when that occurred. I do know that as soon as you all made a decision, the timeline changed. That is, I believe you said that.
Yeah, so we got the, the final engineering standards in June.
Yes.
Uh, we told the county and DHCD to expect a delay in July in our reports.
Did you say how much of a delay or give a new timeline?
We thought sixty to ninety days, um, for the, the make-ready engineering standard. Part of that reason is that when you do pole loading analysis, an engineer can do thirty poles a week.
Okay.
Uh, in most electric service territories, you do that on eight, nine, ten percent of poles. In REC territory, we're doing it on north of ninety-seven percent, and that was a new thing in, in June. Um, and that really slows down the process of getting the poles approved. We didn't know exactly what the impact would be, so in the July, uh, the report for July to the county and DHCD, we said, we think sixty to ninety day delay for, for this make-ready issue.
Okay, so in Ju-, in July, you were saying that the sixty to ninety delay was, sixty to ninety day delay was for the end of February?
Beyond that. Sixty to ninety days beyond.
Okay, so you were saying that you expected in July, you expected project completion to be sixty to ninety days beyond your original estimate of end of February of twenty-four. So essentially, you were saying end of April to end of May of twenty-four in July?
Yes.
Okay, were there any subsequent updates, or has it gone from that to now saying all completion is end of fourth quarter of 2025?
Uh, the change to the middle mile was new last week. There were some correspondence between uh, R, REC and All Points last week. Uh, and we're, that's the timing for the change in the, the middle mile.
Okay.
So we haven't, this is the communication for that.
Okay, so that, I mean, one, cadencing it relative to our board meetings, uh, yes, board presentations and public comments are great, but to the extent that staff and those that you work with in the county can be treated as partners, because that's the way we would like to view it, so that when there's a delay and it has a major impact, even if it's a week or two or whatever in advance, that's great. And for this one, for better or worse, earth, us he-, first hearing about it from REC, followed by hearing about it from All Points, uh, is, ideally, transparent communication would be very appreciated. But even now, I, I missed the sixty to ninety day update, so that's on me and working with others. But relative to even that, now adding more than a year to that, right now, if that's all due to the middle mile, should you, I, and, or should you, the county and REC, sit down and figure out if there's some way that the three of us who are all impacted should have that conversation rather than just the two of you?
We would welcome that.
Well, let's work on that because if that is a major delay, let's see, I mean, to have the presumption that the county should not be impacted, but there's a year delay? Let's get the three of us together and see if there's a way that we can change that.
Agreed. Again, this was something late last week. We, we would welcome that opportunity.
And I think, I think that should be a Public Works
Sure.
Which you chair
Yes.
Initiative.
Absolutely. We, we will do it. We do, yeah, I chair Public Works, which does the groundwork relative to, or is supposed to, and we would love to be involved in those communications because there, there may not be a third alternative, or there may, but we would love to explore that and see if there is. And from that, uh, all that I would ask going forward is the data that you have that are clearly dashboards, if there could be some periodic, yeah, some period of update of the key dashboards, because you're willing to share them now, which is great, but if, if we had those updated monthly, and from that, the update of the high-level Gantt chart, or as it's phrased here, the timeline with the dependencies, uh, monthly, or anytime there is an impact of greater, a material impact, meaning more than ten percent of the estimated complete time, that would help, because we, we got to figure this out together and sitting here and saying anything else, uh, yeah, I may be disappointed, but, which I am, but let's figure out how we can have the best communication.
Understood. And this, these dashboards, you know, it's not typically information that ISPs share, but we're partners in this, we, we got to get you this information. Uh, the third one that we would show is on a map exactly where these poles are, um, that have been accepted, so you can look at it. You can see how long they've been out there. You can see which ones are green. That's an area where we're going to build to first.
See, that stuff would be extremely worthwhile, because if we set expectations that it's going to be whatever that's close to real, then that's fine. If we set an expectation of February and don't change it, until we then move it to some areas are going to be almost two years after that, that changes the impact of, frankly, the, the entire market, the real estate, people's purchase decisions, uh, their decisions of using alternatives, uh, and all sorts of stuff. So having that information is important now, but the more details, including the polls, anything else, uh, would be extraordinarily valuable.
Understood.
Thank you.
In our, um, June seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting, you guys came and actually gave us a survey that told everyone to go ahead and do, and I actually did it. And, uh, I received an email back, and it said that, uh, that you'll use this email to contact, uh, uh, me with updates and announcements. As of today, I've never received one. We got to do better. You got to get out.
You've not gotten a single email update?
Nope.
Okay.
And that was from June seventh, two thousand twenty-two. So we need to let these people know. I mean, that, that will help us on our end, but they're not receiving anything, so we get calls and complaints.
Can I follow up with you on that, just to make sure?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Right, because that, uh, in the absence of that communication, you know, uh, we, not only can we not update people, but, uh, folks come to their own conclusion, and, you know, that has been an issue with, uh, that database, that software. We got to make sure that locations that aren't getting updates get them properly. Uh, and if we're not doing that, we need to communicate more frequently.
And you encouraged to, to share the website link, which was, um, fiber dot AllPointsBroadband.com with your neighbors and that, so that they're aware, plus you. Um, and as, like I said, I've not received anything
Okay.
A year and three months.
Yeah, the same thing. I signed up as soon as we had the first one, first meeting, and I don't get any emails or anything from All Points.
Okay.
Chairman, I have one, one last question from Mr. Ennis. We talked about to make ready, we're ready to go, start hanging fiber. Has All Points Broadband started acquiring materials for this job? I mean, is this
Yes.
Being stockpiled, or?
Yes. So it's, uh, the materials are either on our balance sheet and our warehouse, or in a distributor's warehouse on, um, you know, consigned to All Points, not available for others to purchase, um, but it may not necessarily be physically in a warehouse controlled by All Points.
Well, for some reason, I just have this, this fear that going forward, we have everything ready to go, well, now we've got supply chain issues. We've got it sitting in the warehouse over here, and we didn't realize it was going to be allocated to another job or whatever. I just, it's just so many variables going, I don't know what to, what to relay to my constituents on the problem, future problems that could occur, and I just, I'm hoping that's not going to be one of them.
I think there's, so a, an industry-wide lesson, uh, about supply chain was that there's no more just-in-time, right? You cannot rely on just-in-time inventory. Uh, you need to stockpile that way, way far in advance. And that wasn't a practice, you know, before 2020. But now, internet service providers are buying materials and committing to things, you know, eighteen, twenty months in advance. Um, it's one area where if you work with the right distributor, um, you can get those materials for you in advance. A benefit that we had in putting our application together was we shared all of our design with distributors and cable manufacturers. Um, so it's one thing to get the commitment from a distributor. It's another thing to get the fiber production capacity secured from the actual company that builds the fiber. Um, that's what we went out and did and secured, you know, in their ma-, manufacturing line. Um, it was five or six thousand miles of, of certain types of fiber. So we went down to the, the manufacturer level and got those commitments i- in advance of the application, because we, we knew that that's a problem, um, or, or a risk, that at least we can hedge against that.
Tom, we have, um, last thing I'm going to say with this, but we have six million dollars invested from local funds. State has eight point five million dollars invested. We have very little recourse, other than sitting up here and conveying to you our frustration, which we have. But from the state side, they may have more recourse. Have, have they talked with you, uh, with All Points? Have they set any standards of timelines or expectations, et cetera?
Yeah, so, um, those funds are set aside for All Points, but until we deliver the, the milestones in the network, um, we're not entitled to any remittance or reimbursement. So our incentive is to get the project done according to the plan as fast as possible, because all of those dollars are sitting in the account, that's, that's not for All Points to use until we actually finish the project. So that is the primary incentive. Um, again, we got to deliver the project before we get any of those funds distributed to All Points.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to new business. The board will consider approval of a resolution to Dominion Virginia Power and the State Corpora-, Corporation Commission regarding the potential route of the power line project known as the, uh, Germana Project Line Extension twenty-one ninety-nine. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, so Dominion Power, um, will be presenting, uh, it turns out they'll be presenting three alternatives for service to the AWS facility at Stevensburg. They refer to that transmission line extension project as the Germana Project. They have scheduled a public hearing for October seventeenth, uh, this month to, uh, get public input on those various routes, and ultimately, they will turn all those routes into the State Corporation Commission, who, who makes the final decision on giving them approval and for which alternative. Uh, at this time, I, I've drafted, uh, a potential resolution for the board. It, it may need some tweaking, depending on the discussion this morning, but, uh, I was asked by, uh, multiple board members to, uh, prepare something that would favor the southern route as opposed to the northern route. There actually turns out, uh, that there are two southern routes. They largely overlap each other, so there's not a great deal of difference between the two southern routes. But I would say that the way the resolution is currently drafted just basically would have the board taking a position to both Dominion and the State Corporation Commission that we prefer the southern route. Uh, but if you want to further refine that and say which southern route, um, that, that's on the table as well. Uh, and if the board wishes not to take a position today and, and, uh, hold out, that, that's also okay. But, uh, the, the sort of tenor of the, the resolution that I drafted was that that northern route is a much longer route. It does affect more farmland, uh, and it does seem to me to, to make more sense to come from the south, but, uh, just put that all out on the table for your discussion this morning.
We show that up on the screen, just for anybody else?
The resolution?
No, the map. It's in the packet label.
It would be the second one, I think, Kim.
Dem, jur, mailer map.
No, probably.
Well, hold on, let's see what, no, not that one.
No problem.
Second one, Kim.
Say, that, yep. Maybe zoom out one.
It hit the minus up there in the middle, Kim.
That'll work.
Well, that'll work. Just to, to make clear for, for those watching, so that the existing transmission line there is, is in, uh, the purple color, the, the sort of light blue that comes from the north down to the substation, which would be on Amazon's property, is what I refer to as the northern route. And then the green, orange, and overlapping of those two in yellow would be the two southern
John, looking at this map, the, um, light green and orange, it looks like they both connect right there at the, the Silver Farm. And I know when the Greenwood Project was presented, Chairman Deal had actually, uh, worked with the applicant and had the substation and everything moved, um, I guess, further south, um, at the, at the boundary line of the Greenwood Project. If, if we have to choose between the north and the south, by all means, I'm going to support the southern route, um, for numerous reasons. One, when the, uh, application was presented, um, for rezoning, um, the representative that, uh, helped AWS had alluded to the fact that it would be supplied with power from the southern With that said, the two that are being proposed, uh, I think there was an issue with the substation, um, where that was going to be placed for the Greenwood Solar Project. So I don't know that we want to go and put a, uh, pick a route that is going to impact what, what's already been decided with the, with the Greenwood Solar, put in the substation at a place that, that it shouldn't be, so, but I, I support either one of these, um, in opposition to the northern route.
And Supervisor Bates, I probably should have included in my introductory remarks that, so both of these routes, as currently proposed, would be above-ground lines, which means there's not a requirement for what they call a transition station. Uh, so there, there's no substation impact in the area you're talking about. The only substation associated with this project will be on Amazon's property.
I have received some feedback from other board members and others, uh, similar to what Supervisor Bates says. The southern route, uh, goes across an area that this common landowner does have it in part of Greenwood. It then goes into
owner does have it in part of Greenwood, it then goes into the Amazon property, where it's showing, for some reason, a dedicated way there, but not on the northern route. There are impacts to De Silva, but if we say we support a southern route, the landowner there can have an impact, and say on October 19th relative to what they prefer. So I'm, similar to you, I support a southern route.
So I have received a lot of comments about these transmission lines, and to the fact of that when we did look through the rezoning and approved it in the most expeditious fashion, that these type of things weren't looked at, weren't realized, weren't even questioned. So it, it's very frustrating for my constituents to the fact that we neglected to do due diligence on forcing any type of subject of where these power lines would go, how they would service the facility, when we were looking at whether or not this was an appropriate place for this data center. I do support more of keeping, I guess, industrial with industrial, to the fact that these would go across the Greenwood Solar and impact Greenwood Solar participants. You are looking at a small swath of residential houses along Batna Road, which you're probably looking at a 60, 40% of out-of-the-area landowners versus people who are owner-occupied, but there are some owner-occupied there, and not saying that reducing out-of-area property, owners' property values is something that we should accept, but I, I still struggle with the impact of the people who live there, the renters who live there, who are probably have been there for decades, that now need, may need to look for a new place to live because of the intrusion of these type of power lines, the incessant humming that some of them participate, I know that some of these lines in, like, Falkir County, I talked to a farmer, he's like, I haven't had to electrify my fence in 20 years since that power line went up. So it does impact the people that are around, but taking the lesser of two evils, it's definitely the southern route that i- is more acceptable and shorter, and impacts the less number of people.
Okay. Any further comments? We entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the resolution for supporting the southern route, specifically, I think that Route 2 would be better than Route 3, however, I would be supportive of either of them in the resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, moving on to committee reports, Public Works, Mr. Underwood.
Yes, sir, we're going to have a discussed in closed session, and for number B, the committee brings forward a motion that the board authorized staff to move forward with a proposal from SDI engineers for preliminary engineering study to evaluate the potential improvements to Route 663 Stevensburg Road.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, building in grounds, and Supervisor Underwood, I think you were.
Yes, sir.
Sitting in for.
I substitute once in a while. The committee brings forward a motion that the board approved naming the Loop Road in front of the Carver Center, the name proposed is Noah Price Loop. For those that don't know, Noah Price was the person who donated the land for the building of the Carver Center.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Rules Committee, Mr. Bates.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the committee brings forward a motion that the board authorized advertisement of a public hearing to consider Amendment Article 16, Technology Zones of the Culpeper County Code.
Okay, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Economic Development Report. We have Winona today.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for having me, I'm excited to talk to you about this year's farm tour. All right. So this year's farm tour focused on two strategic plan objectives, first, to showcase Culpeper agriculture through the Culpeper Harvest Days Farm Tour, and secondly, to shoulder additional programming around the farm tour. So this year's 26th anniversary tour was held on Saturday, September 16th, and Sunday, September 17th. We had 15 visitor locations available, we had our welcome center at Culpeper Agricultural Enterprises, the George Washington Carver Center, and 13 participating farms. Our marketing this year focused on Culpeper County and our neighboring counties, our marketing goal was to bring in visitors who would enjoy learning about the participating farms, and hopefully return back to Culpeper outside of just the farm tour dates. Our visitors arrive at each farm, and our volunteers track the number of guests using a clicker. This year, our volunteers tracked just shy of 8,000 clicks, this represents the total visitor count at all of our participating farms. Using this information, we calculated the total visitor count at 2,582 visitors. This year's visitor demographic differed from past years, we had over 50% of farm tour visitors from Culpeper County. Additionally, 21% of visitors lived in our directly surrounding counties, so this was our marketing goal, we want people who are going to be returning back to the county, visiting those farms, those farm stores, and hopefully interacting with our farms, like I said, outside of just that weekend. We did interact with the community more through community events and various organizations. We had 38% of respondents learn about this year's farm tour through either those local interactions or word of mouth with family and friends. So as you all are familiar, we have our passport, which is a fun opportunity for guests to receive stamps at each farm that they visit. This passport's really helpful for us, because it helps our department gain information on where our visitors are coming from, how they're spending money, and how they're interacting with the tour. This year, our visitors reported spending, on average, $115. We use this information to estimate the economic impact of the event, which was at $298,000. The percentage of visitors reporting spending in various categories that we have listed on that passport has increased significantly from this year, from last year, so this year, we had 95% of our visitors who were reporting information state that they were spending money on meals, we had 75% say that they were spending money on shopping at some of the farm stores that were available on these properties, and nearly 50% responding saying that they were spending money on entertainment. So we received feedback from the farms through a post-event survey that shared some of that information, but then it's nice to see it coming directly from the visitors as well, that that information matches up. So as you all are familiar, we launched Choose Culpeper Farms, our new agricultural program at the beginning of this calendar year. This year's farm tour, we had the opportunity to make our first connection with the tour and Choose Culpeper Farms. We did that through the introduction of the Culpeper Farm Corner, so what this was, was it allowed additional Culpeper Farms to set up booths at our welcome center, so that they could act, interact with the hundreds of visitors that we have there, they can give out information about their farm and their operations, as well as sell products. We had seven booths set up over the weekend, each of our farms that participated in that reported sales from the event, and all of those farms requested to return again next year, so we're really excited about that. Like I said, that was our first interaction between Culpeper Farm Tour and Choose Culpeper Farms, and looking forward, we're just going to be looking for additional ways to shoulder programming around the farm tour and further support Culpeper Farms. So at this time, I'd like to provide you guys with this very quick, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Winona.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
On the Choose Culpeper Farms website, do we have any click statistics or anything from the website on how many visitors or anything like that, and where, which topics they're visiting most?
I don't have anything currently, but I can certainly talk to our website developer and see if we've got any background information.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else?
Okay.
No? Okay.
Thank you enough. Okay, Administrator's Report, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple things this morning. First, with regard to Citizen Committee appointments, normally, we would hold a closed session in November and consider all the applications for the various vacant seats, there are seats that will become vacant as of December 31st, and, and make those appointments. So Ms. Hoffman, my assistant, has been gathering all the applications, and I'm sure the county attorney's office will put it all together in a book as usual, but I did have one question for the board this morning, and that's with regard to, in the past, the, the practice, not every year, but most years, has been for the Personnel Committee to convene and hold interviews with maybe not incumbents, but new applicants for the Human Services Board and the Planning Commission. I would say this year that that could be challenging, the Human Services Board has two seats available and 12 applications, the Planning Commission has four applications for three seats, so I, I leave it up to the board, but I seek some guidance this morning as to whether or not there's any kind of interview process you want to try to achieve, and if so, we'd have to do that pretty quickly, or whether you just want to bring it all to the board in November and start the discussion, and as a reminder, even if you decided to delay some things in November, you have till December technically to make the appointments for terms beginning January 1st.
I'll leave it up to, I believe, Mr. Deals, the chairman of the Personnel Committee also, but John, one thing that could be helpful, some have reached out to me, and some may have reached out to others, if we could get the applications beforehand, just so that if we had questions, we could call or whatever, because with 12, so, yeah, that way at least we could be prepared in November to the extent we chose to be.
Yes, sir, Mr. Underwood, we, we normally just include it on the closed session stuff that, you know, like you said, the Thursday before, but with that many applications, I think we could get that out to the board, you know, a few weeks in advance.
That would be very helpful.
Do we have time, John, to where if we look at the applications and vet those applications as a board to narrow down serval to interview, would that be a good way to go?
I, I think depending on the discussion that takes place in November, if you can't make a decision based on what you have in front of you, and the board as a whole wants to do something more, you could, you know, delay it and make the decision in December.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
Yes, sir, just the annual part of my report where I asked the board to draft somebody to be the voter at VACO this year, there are two meetings where the VACO folks ask for a designated representative from Culpeper County to vote, one of those is just in choosing our regional representative that takes place the Sunday afternoon of VACO, November 12th at 4:30, and the second is the annual business meeting, Tuesday, the 14th, at the close of the conference at 10:00 a.m., so I don't know if we have any volunteers.
I think, I think our vice chairman volunteered.
He wanted to.
Thankfully.
Relative to the regional one, I also, because I sit on PD9, but either way, I'm happy to have, I'll do the, yeah, we'll split, I'll do the regional, and Paul will do the business.
Sounds good.
The, the, the forum asked for a designated voter and an alternate, so I, we'll make.
Reverses.
We'll make Mr. Bates the, the, the primary, and, and you can fill in for him at the regional meeting.
Great.
That's what I call working as a team. Okay, closed session. Entertaining motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into closed meeting as permitted under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A8, 32 and 47, to receive legal advice and to discuss and consider the options for a VATI grant proposal related to telecommunications broadband services.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you all.